We'll call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody in the audience this evening. Would you please stand and recite the pledge with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to B, the review of the board norms. I'll read those tonight since I've been short on that. The board development norms are: the decisions will be based on the board's strategic plan, its mission, and what's best for students. The board will act as stewards of tax dollars. Board members will complete foundation work to be prepared for meetings. Meetings will be efficient. All perspectives will be voiced and heard. And all members will maintain a professional decorum. We have no public communications tonight. Is there any conflicts of interest to declare? None. Moving on to consent agenda. Motion to approve. Motion by Brenda. Seconded by Diane. Any discussion? Hearing none. Assuming roll call vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moving to the regular agenda. We have nothing under correspondence or recognition tonight. Under reports, we have the Louis Lamour PTO report. Linda Panchat, go forward.
Thank you for inviting us here. I don't have a specific idea of what you guys are looking for, so I'll just go through, kind of give you a rundown of the projects we do for fundraisers, what we do with those funds, and then basic membership of the PTO. And if you have any other questions, just give me a call, or let me know. As far as fundraisers go, the primary one that we have is the pancake feed. Started as an Applebee's one, as so many are in the community, but last year, due to scheduling conflicts, moved to an in-house one, which we found to be more flexible and more successful. So that's what we're going to continue to do. And we have this year's on April 9th. We do the magazine fundraiser and the box tops. We really try to limit the amount of fundraisers that our students are doing to those that are most effective, since we know that there are so many other causes that are in the community. As far as what we do with those funds, it really varies. We were using most of our funds to build up a playground equipment fund. However, since the future of Louis Lamour and potential expansion and such is still always on the table, and we don't want to put a lot of resources in not knowing where the outline of the school will be, some of those have been used for more temporary structures. This year, we helped put a climbing wall in the gym that has been very well received, has been used for iPad minis for programming for the iPads, student appreciation events and teacher appreciation events, such as, you know, kindergarten and 5th grade graduations, field trips every other year to Bismarck for 4th and 5th graders. And this year is one of those years. Also help, we are no longer a Title I school at Louis, but we continue to subsidize the items that Title I was doing before, such as the National Geographic readers, the IXL Learning Program, Math Night slash Turkey Bingo, just kind of a lot of those things that were previously done through Title I. Book fairs, Back to School Night, et cetera. And we are currently a very small PTO. We have about five active members beyond our two that are school representatives. But we like to think that just increases our efficiency, and we have very good participation from a lot of the parents at our events, so it works. Do you have any questions?
I have one, Linda.
Yes.
With the pancake feed, is it, it's more efficient for you guys? Do you see that it's a better turnout having it there?
We had much better, like I said, last year was the first time we had as many participants as we did with it being at Applebee's. And people liked it better because we are one of the biggest ones that Applebee's would have.
Okay.
And so we had people that would wait up to an hour for their pancakes, get frustrated. Kids were getting fidgety. When we had it at our school, we were able to, they could send the kids out to the playground to play after they were done eating. We did it more of a buffet line sort of concept. It went just as quickly and efficiently, but then people could socialize more while their kids were entertained, and it was just more flexible for them.
That's what I think would be a big benefit there to have it at the school, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Rob?
Just a comment more than a question. I really appreciate the climbing wall. I have had a chance to see that. If you've been up to Louis, if you've seen, it's a horizontal climbing wall, so it's not climbing up, it's climbing across. And really a great structure. And I know they're using it a lot, both at the beginning of the day and part of the FIAD curriculum, and I think at other parts of the day also. But just to really appreciate, you know, that climbing wall, I think it's a great, great benefit.
Yeah, they really are trying to emphasize movement. Mrs. Combs has really been helping push that with Mr. Smith and Mrs. Schmiedeberg as far as movement during the day and before school started. And that's been helpful for that, and we're, of course, blessed to have Mr. Lamour's family support as well. So that helps make some of those bigger projects a little easier for our school. So it wasn't all PTO, but.
Okay. Any other questions for Linda, or Heidi?
We just wanted to appreciate, express appreciation for you and the other members of your PTO and the volunteers at the schools. It really, it makes our schools very special when we have families and parents, you know, involved and also working closely with the school, also meeting some of those things that we like to continue on with our schools. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. And I'll be sure, heading off to our PTO meeting tonight, so I'll be sure to pass that along to the other members. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, Linda. Moving on to number two, professional development report. Joel?
Okay. You guys will probably get tired of seeing me here. First of all, I just, I gave Mr. Lecter a copy of our professional development opportunities that we had, a document we put together last spring and last summer. And we'll be doing the same thing again this year. And that just outlined major things that we're trying to do throughout the year. This year, our major activities, our focus has been the Marzano Teacher Growth Evaluation Model, Improving Academic Literacy Project, which was both an elementary and a middle school, high school project. The multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS, again, a district-wide initiative. And we have just-in-time math, which is some math professional development at the elementary and middle school. And this year, we were fortunate, we received a grant to continue on with our STEM professional development at the, for our 3rd and 5th grade teachers. Last year, remember, we had a grant, and we were able to do 2nd and 4th grade. This year, we were able to continue that with our 3rd and 5th grade teachers. So through cooperation with Valley City STEM Center, we were able to do that. We're in the midst of that right now. And another major project is our monthly professional development planning times that we have with our, at our elementary level, that our instructional coaches facilitate each month at each grade level. I guess the big thing that I want to stress is the fact that, you know, I think that the professional development activities this year, more so than any other time, have really gotten to the point where we're focusing on instruction and what's happening in the classroom. And we've always had, had that, but this year, it seems to be more focused on that instructional piece, working a lot more with reading instruction and student engagement, math instruction. So those core, core things that students need. If, you know, we're always looking for ways to help teachers become better teachers. We have great teachers in our system, and, you know, they're always willing and wanting to grow. And, you know, that is just a testament to them. As of right, as of February, I keep, I have to approve all the professional development leaves, so I sort of keep track of that. From, from the beginning of the year through the month of February, we've had roughly 790 days of professional development across the district. So a lot of resources have gone into professional development this year. And we'll, you know, like I said, we have a good chunk of the school year remaining. So to me, that says that we're making a great commitment to our learning for all. And that includes our instructional staff, our professional staff. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Any questions, sir? Joel? I think what you do, I mean, as far as keeping people, the teachers and stuff, it prevents them from getting into a rut, wouldn't you, wouldn't you say, or as far as?
Well, you know, I think it's, you know, I think all of, like I said, we have great teachers. And an attribute of a great teacher is someone that continually wants to get better and wants to grow. And that's why, you know, I think our teacher growth evaluation system, the change to the Marzano method, model of evaluations, is a great thing because, you know, it brings that instructional piece to the forefront. And I, you know, looking back at the last year or so, you know, I, everything, the things that we've done with professional development, we just continually have gotten closer and closer to what impact does that have on the classroom and teacher and instruction. And that's, that's where we want to focus, put our efforts on, what teachers are doing in the classrooms. They want to become better, and we want to help them as much as we can.
Any other questions, or? None? Okay. Thanks for coming, Joel.
Thank you.
Moving to number three, superintendent's report. Rob?
Thank you. I have, at the top of my report, I have some, there's an interesting document that came through from the study council. And I'll talk about that when it comes up on the agenda, but I, but I did provide a little bit of information there for you. As I also did with open enrollment, certainly more information than anything, but I think it helps to see some trends and, and if you have any questions about those, please let me know. But it's really more for information than it was really for anything else. We have met, as you know from, there's a, there's a, there's a high school principal candidate media release that I attached on the bottom. And we can talk a little bit about, and Brenda and Roger are part of that team also, and they can share their thoughts too. But I think we had a really good, strong candidate pool. There wasn't a lot in terms of numbers, but I think the candidates that we had were very, very solid. And we went through an exercise called the forced choice. And essentially, what that forced choice does is it makes you rate every variable. We, in this case, we're talking individuals, against one another. So for example, in a forced choice exercise, you would say, if I could only interview one person, would it be this person or this person, A or B? And then you go to the next person, would it be A or C, B or C? And in every, in every instance, then it collects data. And at the end of that process, you get numbers. You know, it's quantifiable. And you do that through seven different individuals. And then you get a good sense of a conversation, then you get to have a conversation based on this data. Now, you don't go and say, well, so-and-so got this many, you know, points, so we're going to interview this person. But it does give you a chance to see where people's perceptions are in terms, in quantifying their perceptions, and then engaging in a conversation about why I put this person here, or this person received this many points. Why? Why did they? And then you get to say, okay, well, how does this person fit in the values of what, of what we believe? And similar to our middle school and elementary positions, we also engaged the, we have representatives from the teaching staff, of course, on the interview committee. But we also sent out a survey to all of the high school staff to say, what are the values that you would like to see in the next high school principal? What are some potential questions you would like to ask if you were on the committee? And then any other comments? So we use those to guide us in determining those finalists. So I think it was a good exercise. It was, it was lengthy. It took us a couple of hours to get through those, but I think it was an important process, and I enjoyed it. And so then we'll go through and do those interviews in the next couple of weeks, or next 10 days. And then on the 21st, we'll have, hopefully, I'll have a recommendation for you, for that high school principal position. But it was a very comprehensive selection process. Our interview process is very comprehensive also. I have, oh, I guess I thought I put that in my report. But essentially what we do, we have a tour. There is a scenario that we outlined for the candidates. It's essentially a bunch of different situations, and we ask them to respond to them. And the reason we do that is to help us understand, well, how are you prioritizing your time and issues? How are you going to respond to sensitive types of situations? And, you know, it, when, when, when you're looking at a scenario and that response, you really get a sense of who people are and how they respond to those kinds of, those kinds of situations. We did that also with our elementary and middle school selections also. We thought it was valuable. And, and it was actually, I put it as an option of things we could do, and the group wanted to move forward with that. And of course, then we have our formal interview with the seven members of the team, two teachers, two administrative peers, two board members, and myself. I'll do an exit interview, and then one of our administrators will lead the discussion on perceptions of the stakeholders when I'm doing that. Then we come back and do a debrief. So it's a pretty comprehensive, about a two-and-a-half-hour process for each candidate. And we think it's very good. So that's the process that we'll use. By the 21st, I'll have a recommendation. But I feel very good about our candidates thus far. You know, we'll know a lot more about them and their potential fits after their interviews, but I feel very good about the pool right now. The school board meeting assessments and evaluations. I continued to put this on here. I know that we've talked about moving away from assessments and into the evaluation. Maybe there's a way we can do both, where it's not as maybe cumbersome as attaching them to the norms. But I do believe that a meeting assessment, you know, research will show you that a meeting assessment provides accountability to the board, to, provides a level of accountability for the board. And I think that's good. And I think focusing on what you think is important is good, you know, that you do what you say. And, and so I think there's a good connection to that still. But moving forward with an evaluation, you can't do, you can't spend 30 minutes on a, on a meeting assessment and evaluation either. So I think we need to have a balance. But I'll, I'll work on that, and I'll have something starting in July. We wouldn't want to start it before then anyway, but, but we'll have something there. But I just wanted to continue to have that conversation, what that, what that would look like. PD and MTSS presentations. Mr. Haglund was already here, sharing briefly what we're doing with professional development. But really, the two major initiatives that we've had, you've had a lot of discussion in the last six, eight months on the Marzano Teacher Evaluation System. You've had a couple of different presentations, or at least report points on them. And we haven't talked a lot about MTSS, the multi-tiered systems of support. So what I would like to do over the next couple of months is, we have pathways, or MTSS pathways, that are being developed at the elementary level, at the middle school level, and at the high school level. They're individualized, because they need to be. You're talking different types of kids. But you're, but they're also interconnected. And I think that's important, that it's, that it's systemic. And what I'm going to be doing in terms of presentations is asking that those teams come in different, at different board meetings, and just give you an example. What is MTSS for us? You know, what are those pathways? Why are we doing it this way? Why did we select this intervention? Why did we choose this cutoff or this assessment? What's our universal screener? Those types of questions. And just share with you, so as a board member, you know, this is a major initiative for the school. And it hasn't, isn't something that we've talked about at the board level a lot. So we want to connect you to why we're doing it, what its benefits are to students, and what the long-term implications are for the district. We feel very good about the MTSS process. And it's just something that we had, have had to engage with different teachers to make sure that it's not only fits from a district standpoint, but it also meets the needs of the kids in that building and the staff in the building. So it's been a good process, but I just want to connect you more to what the multi-tiered systems of support mean. So in the next couple of meetings, you'll be seeing those. So we're going to start with elementary, move over, move forward with middle school and high school. So that's reading and math, okay? We'll have a policy FEE first reading today, and I just gave an example of what that is. Basically, it's, it's new clubs that come to the district that we, helps to define if they're categorized as a curricular club, non-curricular club, and what the, what the rules are for, you know, what the guidelines are for curricular clubs and non-curricular clubs. So outside of that, I have nothing else.
Any questions for Rob? None? Moving on to old business. Any old business? Moving into new business. We have nothing under activities, buildings or grounds or curriculum. Number four, we have finance, the North Dakota Study Council Comparison Report. Rob, you want to?
If you pull up that Excel document, I think it really gives some good information there. And I did touch on it in my, in my report, and I'll, I'll maybe just touch on it briefly and then let you ask questions if you want to. But some takeaways, some key points that I saw that you should be aware of. From a taxable value standpoint, that makes sense, where we're at in terms of taxable value. If you look at our size of school compared to all the study council schools, it's right in the ballpark of where we are from an enrollment standpoint. But, actually, I should say it's a little bit lower. But the concerning part is the taxable value per pupil, 14th out of 16. So what that means is compared to our similar-sized peers, we can generate less dollars locally than some of our similarly-sized peers can locally. Now, we have a funding formula that funds most of our, most of our revenue is state-funded. So, so there's that, but, but I think it is important to know where we're at from a local standpoint. What I see, the fact that Jamestown Public School, average cost per pupil, when you consider our taxable value, is 14th out of 16 per pupil. I think what that shows is we're being efficient with the local dollars that we're receiving. I think that's positive. It does have some concerns with, and I'll talk about that in a second. Our Fund One mill levy, which is all the way, I think, the, the right-hand column that you see, that is our general fund miscellaneous levy. That's in the top third of study council schools. But our total mill levy is actually 13th out of 16. Now, if you were to consider our referendum had passed, that would have added 25.11 mills. And that puts us then 6th out of 16. So that's really more information than anything, but, but I think it does help to give you a sense to see where we compare. I do think the concerning aspect of all of this, as I stated in my report, is the Fund One Mill Levy, 80.71 mills, a cap of 82 mills. That's 60 general fund, and they, I guess technically, they call the 10 mills Board Discretionary, as I think in law what it's called. But really, you have a 70 fund, 70-mill general fund, 60 plus the 10. Beyond that, you have 12 and a miscellaneous. We're at 80.71. And you have the ability to go to 82. So there's not a lot of wiggle room locally. In the past, when we've had a higher tax, or a higher mill cap, 185 mills, if the state didn't provide a, you know, in a down cycle year, like what we hear is coming, we were able to mitigate what we didn't get from the state through local. We really don't have that capability with an 82, 82-mill cap anymore. We really are more at looking at what, what the state's going to provide to help us kind of determine where we're going moving forward. If you look at that 1.29 mills, just based on taxable value in 2015, that'd be about, able to generate about $76,000 more than what we have right now. You know, in a, in a budget our size, you know, that's not a lot of dollars. And what's particularly concerning about that is if you were to visit with Jerry Coleman, we just had a meeting this morning, or this afternoon, with the Legislative Focus Group. I, I chair the Finance Committee. And some information we got from Jerry Coleman, Department of Public Instruction, had stated that just to maintain where we're at in the funding formula, that's not an increase to the student payment, that's maintain, when you consider the new students coming in, for example, other factors. It is, hold on, let me find it again, just to maintain, would be $164 million to maintain our student payments at the amount they are right now, just to maintain. If we wanted to go through and see impact similar to what we did last year, that would add another 106 million. So you're talking about 270 million increase if we wanted to see what we saw this past biennium, or what we're seeing this current biennium. But, you know, kind of the big, the big sticker shock is 164 million just to maintain. You know, in a, and that's in, in an environment in which other departments are seeing cuts. Now, we do have Foundation Aid Stabilization Funds, and there are, there are other mechanisms that support school funding. But I think it is important to, to at least see that, so you understand the environment economically in which we're going to be in legislatively, where we're talking any department, schools, that include funding from the state. And when we're dependent upon the state funding, when it provides such a greater percentage of our budget than it has in the past, and with a mechanism of capping at that 82, that's, that's, that's a bleak forecast for us. So that's one of the things that we're doing with our Legislative Focus Group, is we are looking at, you know, what can we do to ensure that we get the funding that we need at, you know, at the K-12 level to support education and grow education in our state? So I don't want to paint it as a, you know, as, that there are no options, but we're going to have to be creative as we look forward to, to see any kind of increase in state funding for schools. I think the best we can hope for, to be honest, at this point without being creative, is to maintain what we've got. With that, I will ask, answer questions if you had it. But I, I figured it was good information that you could see where we're at, how we compare, and lead into a discussion on the state forecast.
Any other question, or questions for Rob on that, or Heidi?
I just, I appreciate you being involved in, in the Legislative Focus and the School Study Council. I think it's important that, I mean, we, you know, we're dependent on the state funding, and I think it's really important that you're involved and take the time to be involved in, in these, so we, and so we can do some planning as well here at the district level. But just for our viewers, maybe just explain what the, the School Study Council is and what it does, and that's where this report was generated from.
Sure. Thanks. The North Dakota State Study Council is, it would be inaccurate to say that it is the 16 largest school districts in North Dakota, but it sort of is that. In the bylaws, it's actually the schools that are or have been Class A schools. And that's kind of an antiquated way to, to determine membership. But, but that is what it says in the bylaws. And so when those schools become Class A, they are invited to become a part of Study Council. And if they leave Class A, they're still maintained. So it isn't accurate to say that it's the largest districts. It's not accurate to say it's the Class A districts, but it's sort of a mix of both of those. For example, Castleton, Central Cast, is larger than some of our, our Study Council schools, but they've never been Class A. So they are, they aren't on the Study Council, but Rugby is, who used to be Class A. Langdon used to be Class A, but they didn't, they no longer are members of Study Council. So it's kind of a, you know, it's an interesting mix. But I'll, I'll say it's, it's one of the most beneficial groups that I'm a part of. I think they do really have discussions and, and guide some really important decisions in our state. It's very valuable for Jamestown to be a part of State Study Council.
Any other questions, Rob? None? Moving on to personnel, five. Is there a motion to, what I'll do is- Is there a motion to... What I'll do is read the recognition of the appropriate unit, and then if we can have a motion or a second. Jamestown Public School Board, after investigating... Investigation of the petition filed by the Jamestown administrators, requesting that the said organization be reorganized as the representative organization for the previous recognized appropriate negotiating unit, has determined that the Jamestown administrators does represent a majority of the persons within the unit, and hereby recognizes the Jamestown administrators as exclusive representative organization for the minimum of one year, beginning March 7, 2016. Motion to... Motion by Heidi, is there a second? Seconded by Greg, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving to letter B, is there approval to accept the letter of resignation for Rose Scroo, Title I teacher at Lincoln Elementary, at the conclusion of the 2015-16 school year? Motion by Heidi?
I appreciate her service.
Yep, most definitely, appreciate her service. Seconded by Greg, any discussion? Hearing none, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving to letter C, we have approval of the superintendent's evaluation. And you all should have that on your drive there. And we usually approve every... Or required to approve every set. So is there a... Is there a motion to approve the relationship with the board as a satisfactory? Motion by Brenda? Seconded by Diane, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Sally, you want to?
Greg, excuse me, Greg Allen? Heidi Larson?
Yes.
Roger Hout?
Yes.
Mindy Schmitz?
Yes.
Diane Hansen?
Yes.
And Brenda Remick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve satisfactory rating for community and public relations? Motion by Mindy, seconded by Brenda, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Diane Hansen? Brenda Remick? Roger Hout?
Yes.
Heidi Larson? Mindy Schmitz? Greg Allen?
Yes.
Motion passes, 6-0.
Is there a motion to approve the staff and personnel management a satisfactory rating? Motion by Mindy, seconded by Diane, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Heidi Larson?
Yes.
Roger Hout?
Yes.
Diane Hansen?
Yes.
Greg Allen?
Yes.
Mindy Schmitz?
Yes.
Brenda Remick?
Yes.
Motion passes, 6-0.
Is there a motion to approve a satisfactory rating under number four, business and fiscal management? Motion by Diane, seconded by Brenda? Roll call vote?
Roger Hout?
Yes.
Diane Hansen?
Yes.
Greg Allen?
Yes.
Heidi Larson?
Yes.
Brenda Remick?
Yes.
And Mindy Schmitz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving to number five, is there a motion to approve facilities management as a satisfactory rating? Motion by Mindy, seconded by Diane, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Diane Hansen?
Yes.
Greg Allen?
Yes.
Heidi Larson?
Yes.
Roger Hout?
Yes.
Brenda Remick? Mindy Schmitz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is there a motion to approve number six, curriculum management as a satisfactory rating? Motion by Brenda, seconded by Diane, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Greg Allen?
Yes.
Mindy Schmitz?
Yes.
Heidi Larson?
Yes.
Roger Hout?
Yes.
Brenda Remick? And Diane Hansen?
Moving to number seven, is there a motion to approve student services management as a satisfactory rating? Motion by Mindy, seconded by Heidi, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Mindy Schmitz?
Yes.
Diane Hansen?
Yes.
Greg Allen?
Yes.
Brenda Remick? Roger Hout?
Yes.
Heidi Larson?
Yes.
Moving to number eight, is there a motion to approve a satisfactory rating as for personnel and professional attributes? Motion by Greg, seconded by Mindy, any discussion? Roll call vote?
Diane Hansen?
Yes.
Greg Allen?
Yes.
Heidi Larson?
Yes.
Brenda Remick?
Yes.
Mindy Schmitz?
Yes.
Roger Hout?
Yes.
Motion passes, 6-0.
Is there a motion for the last, number nine, management and professional attributes as a satisfactory rating? Motion by Mindy, seconded by Brenda, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Greg Allen?
Yes.
Heidi Larson?
Yes.
Roger Hout?
Yes.
Mindy Schmitz? Diane Hansen?
Yes.
And Brenda Remick? Motion passes, 6-0.
Should I say five and a half?
It was a little delayed there, so... But I mean, I like to thank Rob for, I mean, his, I mean, his job that he's been doing with our school system and so on. And it just, I mean, it shows in the scales and everything that... How we've scaled you, so... Heidi, you want to?
Yeah, I just want to add on to that. As a board, we have to approve satisfactory or unsatisfactory. But in reality, in each category, he exceed... He has in the category of exceeding expectations as an overall score. And then also, I was going to mention, if there were any... And I might have missed on here. If there just any comments that people had, just probably attach those at the bottom.
They're attached on... I don't know if they're on the drive.
I might have missed it, so I'll look, okay.
There are some of them there. For the people who don't know, like Heidi said, North Dakota Century Code says whether we have a satisfactory or unsatisfactory. So that's where that comes from. Any other comments? Hearing none. Moving to policy and procedures. Oh, no, we're yet... Yeah. Policy and procedures, there are a motion to approve the first reading of the student organization policy, FEE, and the subsequent application, FEE-E. Move by Mindy, seconded by Brenda, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving to tuition, is there a motion to approve a no-cost tuition agreement for a 10th grade Jamestown student to attend Montpelier School for the 2015-16 school year? Motion by Greg, seconded by Diane, any discussion? Hearing none, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving to letter B, is there a motion to approve the no-cost tuition agreement for a first-grade Jamestown student to attend Pingree Buchanan Public School for the 2015-16 school year? Motion by Brenda, seconded by Heidi, any discussion? Hearing none, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have a public forum meeting, is it June 20?
Just a comment, that's a suggestion, June 20. Every other year, we're required to do... Have this public forum, a long-term demographic meeting, is I believe what it's called in Century Code. And I will prepare all that information. We do need to have that forum just to share with the public. Things like our historical mill levy comparisons, enrollment trends, facility needs, those types of things. And I will provide those in a presentation and do it during a board meeting, if that's what works best. It's what I would recommend, rather than have a separate meeting just to do it. Then if we publicize it during this time, it just makes sense, if you're all here anyway. We just have that forum at that time.
I would say we go ahead and do it that time.
You would set it, you have a motion to set that.
Okay, is there a motion to set our public forum meeting for June 20, 2016, at 6:00 PM? And that is one of our regular school board meeting nights, so... Motion by Greg, seconded by Mindy, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have items for future agenda. Before we get there, we do have a meeting tomorrow with the transportation and... Wednesday, excuse me, Wednesday. And Bob and Heidi are on that committee as far as board members. And they're both going to be gone on Wednesday. Does anybody want to sit in on that Wednesday at what?
Is it nine or 10? Hold on.
Nine o'clock, Amy?
That's what he mentioned.
Nine o'clock.
Does anybody want to?
At night?
No.
Put me down, I'll try to make it Wednesday at nine. And Gail's going to be gone, or?
I don't know.
Okay, I'll try to talk to her, because she's the one that brought up some of the situations about the transportation, and she might be one that... I'll call her, be her or myself.
And just a reminder, too, you know, we aren't making decisions at that meeting. It's just engaging in detriks with a discussion over the request to change the format and then the costs associated. So a very preliminary discussion. So like I said, there are decisions that will be made at that meeting.
Okay, items for future agenda. If something does come up, just let Rob or myself know, and we'll get him on there. Meetings to be scheduled, we have the Health Committee meeting on Monday, March 14, at 3:30 in the central office. And then our next school board meeting is... What's that?
That timeframe might change.
Oh, it might change on the time?
What?
So we'll have to check that. But the next school board meeting is March 21, 2016, at 5:15 here in the Thompson Room. And before we do adjourn, I remind every members to right-click on their adjournment button and assess our meeting. No further business, meeting's adjourned.